Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Town of Presippany, Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. It is Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025, and it's 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting, excuse me, announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10, column 4, dash, at 6, at set of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. We will have our roll call. Mr. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. DeCros.
Here.
Mr. Musarella.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairwoman, Gragnani.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Tadwick.
Who is it?
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Would you please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, delivering the light for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chalit, can you raise your right hand, please? This is your testimony, not your legal. You're more than happy enough to talk.
I do.
For anyone to be raised their hand, please, to keep firm, your testimony, your truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Is there anyone in the public that has anything other to say than what is on our agenda this evening? Sina. Correspondence, please. We're going to move on to correspondence. Yes, correspondence received from Attorney Steven Sheffis, request and application 2438, block 764, lot 34, be carried to May 28th, 2025, 7:30 PM, at Presippany High School without further notice, and grants an extension of time for the board to make decision on the case through June 30th, 2025. And resolution. We have...
Do we have to move it?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
So moved. Second.
Who seconded it?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Mal.
Are you ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution 2361, SRI, block 7, 156, Paulsy Road, block 3, 25, lot 3. Resolution to approve the dismissal of the application.
So moved.
Second.
But this is dismissed.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
We'll move on to our agenda. Application 2438, Islamic Community Cultural Center, 879 South Bevick Road.
That didn't move.
That was already moved.
Yes.
Sorry about that, okay. Application 2459, Mr. Patel, 93, Troy Meadow Road, block 763, lot 19, dash, 01, zone R3, C variants to legalize habitable attic with furnished walls, rooms, creating a three-story dwelling contrary to section 430, dash, 35, column 11. This application was carried from January the 8th, 2025.
Good evening, everyone. Joseph O'Neill here on behalf of the Patels. So before I start this application, I want to tell you a little bit about myself, why this application is suddenly so important to me. I have at home a collection of thousands of pieces of physical media, albums, CDs, DVDs. Perhaps you've heard of people with the affliction I have. We're not boarders, we have a collection, even though it's better described as the amassing of things that have been following me around for about 40 years. Downstairs in my house, I have about 1,000 square foot storage space that contains these in boxes. It's so bad, my wife takes people when she shows the house downstairs to show them what she calls the archive. So when I asked my client, the Patels, why do you need a storage space with closets? And he described to me the shoes, dresses, jewelry, and other things his wife and daughter had amassed. I understood that perfectly. So I want to go ahead and bring up Mr. Patel. Mrs. Patel. And we're going to talk a little bit about the exhibits that I've given you, which is these photos of the stuff. Here, go ahead. There's another chair over there. So the photos are of things that are in their current home, in their bedrooms, their bags filled with the clothes, the shoes, the jewelry, which is going to occupy the storage space in the new house in the attic, which is, of course, a third floor.
Can you raise your right hands, please? Just swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Can you state your name? And make sure you speak into the microphone.
My name is Patel, D-A-D-I-S-H, Patel, D-A-D-I-N-I.
And you, ma'am?
H-E-M-A-N-G-I-N-I, need to speak.
Louderly. Yeah, raise your, please just speak up, okay?
Raise your voice a little bit.
You're shouting at your face.
H-E-M-A-N-G-I-N-I, last name Patel, P-E-D-E-L.
Great, thank you.
Our Mrs. Patel. You heard me describe what you're going to be using that third floor attic. Is that it?
Yes.
You've got quite a bit of clothing and shoes and other accessories.
Yes.
And you want to put that in a space where you can access it easily.
Yes.
And it's not going to be room for anybody else. It's not going to be air-conditioned or heated. It's just for storage.
Yes.
With the dresses hanging in the closet, and the other shoes and accessories, and maybe some dresses in the room. So I guess you have it all over now, how you're going to do it.
Yes.
So Jagdish, Mr. Patel, when you went ahead and drywalled this space, it was satisfied your desire to put your wife and your daughter with the items that we described.
Yes.
And you sent the photos that I asked you to take of their existing collection, it's called.
That's right.
And that's what's going in the storage space.
That's right.
Now, we've provided it to you through our architect, who is here this evening, should you have any questions, what the layout of that space is. You can see that there's a stairwell coming up from the second to the third floor, and it goes into a main room, which has, I believe, two closets. This is all going to be where that material that's in those photos is going to be stored. There's no heating or air conditioning up there, so it's just for storage. But it is finished, so that's why it counts as a third space, third floor space. I have no further questions for this.
Will there be any restrictions on the use of that attic?
Well, we're willing to agree to a restriction that it only be for storage. Should the board want a deed restriction, my client has directed me that we can do that.
It's Arthur.
Yes.
And there will be no HVAC, uh, no air conditioning, no heating.
Nothing like that.
How big is the house?
I think it's a house.
How many bedrooms?
How many square feet, like, bedroom?
Can you speak into the microphone? Speak up.
I'm not that, how much? About 1,000?
It's 3,000 square foot house.
How much?
2,000?
3,000.
Is the stairwell going up? Is it a regular stairwell or is it a pull-down step?
Well, it's a regular stairwell because the ladies would like to be able to access this easy. If it was a pull-down stair, wouldn't be such a good idea.
Is there a bathroom up there?
No, there's nothing up there. There's no electric, there's no heat or air, no plumbing, just storage.
There must be electric for the light to see up there.
Only for the light.
So this is existing space, you're not building on top of the house, right?
Well, it was included, it was part, the house was approved as part of a subdivision. So the house was built to the specifications of the house approved for the subdivision. With the addition of the attic being modified for the storage, they did that on their own. So it is actually as it is now, but from the outside, you can't see the space.
So there's no additional structural change to the structure, can I propose, okay? So you're just asking to then legalize the use of that space rather than just an attic?
Right.
That's your request of variance?
Yes. To allow it to be finished, which we recognize under township rules, counts it as a third floor. But we're willing to enter into these restrictions and make these representations so the board knows it's just for storage.
Okay, and the reason for finishing it is because...
The ladies want to keep their dresses and shoes and accessories.
So there's no, there's no flooring in there, anything right now?
I think it's got a floor, right? It's got a floor.
So by finishing, what are you doing finishing? You're putting in some closets and...
Drywall and two closets. Finished and according to the...
No outside, no, no windows or outside stuff going on.
There are windows in the attic, though, yes?
Are there windows in the attic?
Yeah.
But they're existing.
These photos, are they actually in the attic?
No, that's what's in the house now. They want to get that stuff out of the attic.
Oh, that's what's moving.
Gotcha. Into the attic.
I ask a question. You way down here. The two units HVAC systems in the unfinished part of the attic are for the existing for downstairs?
Below, yes.
For first and second floor?
That's right.
Okay.
Mechanicals below.
Any other questions from the board?
The items stored in the attic, proposed attic, do they have any impact of heat or cold, extreme weather?
No. So the, just to clear, the variance is not from the third floor, the variance is for finishing the attic. That's right. Well, it counts as a third floor.
Does it have habitable?
No, I do, can we just, can we, can we do it that way?
The finishing, the finishing of the attic turns it into a third floor under your orders.
Right. Yes.
That's what causes it to be a third floor.
And you will be accepting a deed restriction.
Right, so the variance is for finishing, not for use.
Yes.
Correct.
What is, what is the...
The restriction is, storage is allowed in attics.
Yes, but what is habitable attic? Habitable means living.
It means it's finished.
Finished, not living but finished.
Yeah, we're making a representation.
And they're saying they're not going to inhabit it. Want to be clear on that, again.
The fact that it's finished now makes it now habitable and then turns it into a third floor, which requires a variance.
One of the reasons I forwarded the photos is so you can see that's going to fill that room.
Is there a basement or no? Will there be a basement?
Yes.
What's going to be in the basement? Is it going to be a finished basement?
It's finished, but not stored.
What is in the basement, may I ask? Is there a bathroom downstairs in the basement?
Yes.
Is there a sink downstairs?
Only bathroom.
Just the bathroom.
All that's existing anyway, so, so I, I think the question would be, why can't you store this stuff in the basement, would be the question, I think they're really trying to get at. But I, I don't have any problem with storing stuff in an attic. You're agreeing that that's all that's going to be there, you're not going to have anything else done up there, you're, no change to the exterior, whatever. Just, just to clarify in my head, because I'm, I'm getting mixed signals, is this house already built or are we building in...
Yes, the house is built.
And it's been, how long has it been built for? Is it an older house, new house, what?
It was part of a subdivision in, uh, you got its zoning permit 2019.
Okay, all right, all right, that clears my head.
So when the zoning permit was issued in 2019, the stairs to the third floor attic were included in the plans, correct? Is that, is that correct?
Is that correct? The stairs were in the plan?
Yes.
So the stairs were in the original approved plans, correct?
Yes.
The permanent stairs, not the pull-down stairs.
That's right.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you.
We're done.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess you have a good one.
Mr. Chagdish, do you have any other questions?
No, I think we've offered restrictions to keep it as a storage area.
Would someone like to frame a resolution, please?
Application 24, I'm sorry, yeah, 24, column 59, Jagdish Patel, 93, Troy Meadow Road, block 763, lot 19.01, zone R3, looking to grant a C variants, legalize habitable attic with finished walls, creating a three-story dwelling contrary to section 430, dash, 35, with the intended deed restrictions, I think.
I don't think the word should be habitable.
Right.
Because we're not granting an approval for habitable attic.
Right.
So I would suggest we just drop the word habitable.
Yes.
And we offer a resolution.
Finished, maybe?
Finished.
Like a finished, finish it and use it for storage.
Finished attic for storage?
Yes.
And a deed restriction.
Deed restriction, new storage.
Deed restriction that it can only be used for storage.
Yeah.
With the air conditioning and heating.
Second, ready?
They don't have any.
They don't have any.
It doesn't have to be conditioning.
No.
Berkowitz?
You've made a representation that there is no, currently no heating and air conditioning in the attic, and that you're not asking for permission to install heating or air conditioning in the attic.
That's correct.
But the, the heating in the, is accessed from the attic, isn't it?
Through a hatch in a finished space.
Right, okay. Yeah, it is on the third floor, though.
But it doesn't provide...
It's in the attic, the HVAC.
But it doesn't provide any cooling or anything?
No.
The ducts are down.
The cooling's down.
Okay. Go ahead, Nora.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Gragnani.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Okay. Two weeks, right?
Two weeks. Thank you. Application 24, column 74, Lonnie and Paula Katz. Katz, excuse me. Sorry about that. Terrace, block 759, lot 13, zone R3, C variants to construct a proposed open deck with stairs and legalize an existing open deck contrary to section 430, dash, 101. Mr. and Mrs. Katz, I apologize.
That's all right. Quite all right. We feel unprepared now because we don't have an attorney. I didn't even know that was like a thing.
You might not need one.
You don't have to come with anything. So can you raise your right hands, please? Just swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Great. You put your hand out, state your names, spell your last names, just make sure you speak into the microphone.
I've been told I'm too loud, if anything, so I'm Paula Katz, last name K-A-T-Z, and...
That's it.
That's it? Okay. I'll introduce him.
Lonnie Katz, K-A-T-Z.
Great, thank you. Tell us, tell the board what it is that you'd like to do.
You want to?
Yeah.
So we decided in this last year to build my dream kitchen, so we have a split level in the Troy Hill School area of town, and having a split level, we had two different staircases going up into the kitchen, which really made the space not usable and created a really fun challenge for my husband. Every time he wanted to grill, he got to run down the stairs, jump over couches, kids watching TV, to go out onto our deck if he wanted to grill, or we wanted to go into the yard. So as part of this construction, we closed the duplicate staircase, the one going from our den into the kitchen, and made that usable kitchen space, and now they added sliding doors where our dining room windows used to be. So what we're asking for approval to do is now build a small deck off of those new sliding doors so that he can now not risk his life and limb to just go outside, go into the yard and do some grilling for the family, and we can just have access to the yard from that sliding door.
There is a application also to legalize an existing deck?
Well, we'll be, yeah, when we put in this, when we put in all the paperwork for the construction, everything's, everything's been approved except for the deck. So in order to get the kitchen done, we took the deck off, got the kitchen done, because when they, when we went for the deck, they said that our existing deck was never approved. But we bought the house in 1999 and it had a deck and a hot tub, which we had removed. So that was a surprise to us, that the previous owners never made the, the deck where we bought the house legal. We didn't know that that was done without the town's consent, yeah.
But you took that off.
I'm sorry?
You took that old deck off, is that what you said?
No, the deck, we took it off, um, the initial work plans.
The plan.
Oh, you took it off the plan?
Yes, yes, just to get the permits for the...
You didn't physically remove it?
No.
That's what I said.
No.
So now you want to legalize that deck was never been legalized?
Um, yes.
Okay, it's been existing since 1999?
Um, since we moved in that year, so it was there prior.
And it was pretty old when we moved in, so it's, it's been there for quite some time.
Hot tub is gone?
Yes.
Are these decks open to me if the rain, water goes through the deck?
Yeah, there's space in the tinfoil.
It's not dummy group. It's not dummy group, it's a, it's spaced, the water goes through.
Yes, yes. And it's ground level, like it's literally deck sitting on the ground. It's not, it's not elevated at all.
This is really nitpicking, but just to help me understand, because it sounds like a middleman, frankly, to me, but we, we look at a variance request here, and what it's suggesting is you have existing, uh, with yard and courts and open space, 20.26, okay? And allowed is 19, so you're a little bit over, that's the minimus, and you're proposing 21.71. Why is it going up if you're not really making any change to that size up there? That's what I don't understand.
No, but it's going to be a new deck off of the new sliders with stairs down to the existing.
I'm with you.
That's the 220 square foot open deck with stairs.
Yes.
Yes, that's the new one, that's the only one that's going to be raised off of the ground, it's, so it, now we have the sliding door, so we need somewhere for the doors to go. So we would like just to have a small deck, just so we can exit out of the dining room, have, you know, maybe a small peephole cable, and then just stairs to access the yard from those sliding doors.
And that one's going to be elevated off the ground, you said?
That will, yeah.
Yeah, it's a split level.
It's about, yeah, about three, three and a half feet, maybe?
And underneath is just grass, dirt, whatever.
Yeah.
Pretty diminished, to me, I will be voting in favor of it.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the board?
No.
Are there any questions in the audience of this application? Sina, would one of our members like to frame a resolution, please?
Application 24, column 74, Lon and Paula Katz, 15 Colonial Terrace, block number 759, lot 13, zone R, dash, 3, to grant a C variants to construct a proposed open deck with stairs and legalize an existing open deck contrary to section 430, dash, 10, I.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Gragnani. Yes. Application's approved. At our next board meeting, application will be, we'll have a resolution, and then you will be notified.
Okay. Should we attend the next?
No, you don't.
You can if you want.
Is there anything you have to pick up, like what, I don't know, next steps?
Once we say it's good, you can build it.
Okay. No, no. Nora will do this now.
Listen to Nora, Nora, Nora knows better than me.
I want to give you a call tomorrow, I'll go over everything with you, okay?
Thank you so much.
You'll help us. Application 24, 79, Patel, 104 Hillside Terrace, block 387, lot 6, zone R, dash, 3, a C variants to construct additions from landing and stairs, front porch, rear landing and stairs, air conditioning units on concrete pad, and reconfigure driveway with expansion contrary to section 430, dash, 35, columns 5 and 10, and section 430, dash, 275H. Mr. Patel?
Can you raise, can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
What is your relationship to the property?
Um, I'm actually honored for, uh, for this property.
Okay, great. So what is it that you'd like to do?
Um, I'm living with my wife and my two daughter and my son. My son is in college now, but my daughter is still in a 12th grade, and my little one is, is also in a school. So when I bought it in 2010, this house is, as my first property, and to start the, the main, main issue is what the very small, small room is, like 10 by 10 rooms, and, and after 15 years now, the roof is start leaking and, and I have some window shots, I have a lot of water penetration coming from the, the complex behind my house, is a Green Hill Plaza, because there is no, there is no, the water system, drainage system or anything, I have any, any drain or anything, all the water coming through my backyard property is damaging, if it's a heavy rain, it's a lot of water coming in my business. So I'm proposing to go for something good for my family and to make some, uh, nice house.
Well, how's what you're planning to do going to alleviate the water problem?
I mean, I'm going to do the waterproofing with the, I'm going to put like the backside, I have the solid concrete wall foundation, so at least I have to put the waterproofing mampin' on the other side and make a waterproofing, twizm inside.
Is that all included in your plan here?
Yes, sir.
I guess I missed that. Did you receive the report from the municipal engineer dated March 31st, 2025? Did you get that?
Uh, report, uh, I mean, I, I don't have any report from...
From the township engineer?
Yeah, that's later, you, yeah, I, I received it.
Okay.
Do you have that?
Yeah.
Um, it's dated March 31st, 2025. Do you have that document?
No, I have March 4.
Okay. I'm going to just show it, the, the one I have. Have you seen this document?
Uh, yeah.
See, I, I just want to make sure you have this document.
I have, so far this notice.
But that looks like, what you hold, what you're showing me looks like multiple pages?
Yeah.
Does that, the, the those that clipped together set of documents include a March 31st, 2025 memo from the municipal engineer?
I don't know. You don't have that document?
It was in the, it was in the email, right? Okay.
I don't think we have that either.
We don't, we, we don't have it.
Are you?
I have only this letter, legal notice, this one and, and this one.
It was in, it was in the email you sent down.
Oh, well, okay, I, then I missed.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Well, so you have not received this report that I'm referring to? The March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five report?
That's correct.
Okay. The municipal engineer, and I'm, just for the benefit of the board as well, the municipal engineer reviewed the plans that you submitted. He indicates that you're increasing the impervious coverage by over five hundred square feet, which will result, in his opinion, in a significant increase of stormwater runoff from the property. And that will then require you to make some significant improvements to the property to deal with stormwater runoff.
That's correct.
Which may be, and he indicates, um, the applicant shall be made fully aware that stormwater management measures are unconditionally required and may likely be costly. So the fact that you haven't even seen this report tells me that you haven't even been given, had the opportunity to determine what those stormwater management requirements might be.
Right.
Correct?
That's correct.
And whether you could, whether you want to either modify your plans or address, or considering what the cost of that might be, or, or some other, or, or address those issues in some other way?
I mean, I can address when, when I apply for a construction for me time. I can revise the, you can revise the drawing.
Yeah. If this board were to look at your application favorably, they would likely require you, I would say almost certainly require you, to comply with all recommendations of the municipal engineer, including those related to stormwater management.
Right.
Okay, I have some concerns that since you haven't seen that report, you haven't had an opportunity to analyze what that might cost you and whether the cost of that might cause you to change your plan. So my question to you is, and it's up to you as to what you want to do, my question to you is, do you want the opportunity to make sure you get that report, review that report with whoever you're working with on your plans, to make sure that you can accommodate what you need to accommodate in, in terms of stormwater management?
I can, I can.
Yeah.
I can follow the, the requirement, no problem. I can take, I can take that cost for myself.
But the cost may be exorbitant, and our attorney is saying, do you want to look at the report, possibly even speak with the, uh.
Engineer?
The engineer?
Okay.
Before you go forward, we can always carry your application once you speak with the engineer.
That's fine.
It's, it's up to you as to what you want to do.
Good decision.
This is protecting you, not us.
Yeah, I can go. I can, I can move with the engineer.
So, so you're gonna ask this board to carry your application?
Right.
To give you an opportunity to speak with the municipal engineer and whoever you're working with in terms of the design?
Right.
And come back at a later date after you've had that conversation? Is that what you want?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That'd be smart.
May we have a, a day, please, to carry? Um, sure, I mean, I don't know, he's gonna have to come up with the plans with the engineer. I asked May twenty-first, I could fit him on, I don't know, that's too soon. He has to come back with the plans. All right.
June.
Um, I'm due on June twenty-fifth.
Chairman Chair, just got one question before the applicant leaves?
No, you should have, you know, we have May twenty-first, but you should have time to review and talk to the engineer.
And you may have to come up with a plan. Hire an engineer. Mr. Lemanowitz has a question.
Mr. Patel, we have, we have the plans from Jeep, VP Architectural.
Yes.
And we have a plan, uh, that's, it shows, it says it's a survey by Mr. Jaeger, and it looks like it's been cut up to fit.
Yeah, that survey was the original survey, then.
Okay, because this house is not this house. They're different houses.
No, it's the same house.
They're not shaped the same. The garage, the garage on the survey is set back, where the garage on the, on the architecturals or in the front is in the front.
I've seen survey.
In summary, you're probably gonna be changing your plan anyway, okay? Once you deal with the engineer's requirements, right? So.
Just make sure you come back with an accurate, with the correct survey.
Yeah, same survey with my whole house picture and everything.
Was this house, was this house torn down to build this one?
No.
Because like I said, the houses aren't the same shape. You swear it all.
There's still some additions.
Because he used this can, I think, and put it here.
Sorry?
I gave him a, my survey to my, my architect.
Right.
And his can, and he put it here in this drawing. And that drawing I submitted down there.
Well, your plans may have to be changed, sir. Once you speak to the engineer, you may want to change some things.
Maybe change.
So what the engineer is saying, Lemanowitz is saying, please make sure your survey is the correct property.
Right.
The current correct property.
Yes, the current, thank you.
Okay, so you understand the issue here?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We'll see you on, um, June twenty-fifth.
June ten.
So your first order of issue is get with the engineer.
To the engineer.
Do you have a motion, please?
So moved, moved to carry to June twenty-first. Second. Third.
I got June twenty-fifth.
June twenty-fifth, it's June twenty-fifth, yes. Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you.
Okay. See you in here.
Mr. Patel, I'm gonna give you my copy of that letter, okay?
Thank you.
The town engineer should have sent it after you.
Okay, okay, so you see, I'm gonna.
June twenty-fifth. Application twenty-five, colon fifteen, Dave Pitney, Eighth Sylvan Way, block two oh two, lot one dash eleven, zone R O L, C variance to construct a wall sign.
Good evening, my name is Nicole Magdziaak, M-A-G-D-Z-I-A-K, of the law firm Dave Pitney, here on behalf of the applicant, Dave Pitney. Our offices are currently located at one Jefferson Road, and our lease is expiring, and we will be moving into a new office at Eighth Sylvan Way. We're hoping to, um, open that office the first week of August, and so far, we're on track to do so. As part of our, um, interior fit out, we, or our fit out of the building as a whole, we were also looking at signage on the exterior of the building. And our landlord approved a wall on the exterior of, that says, Dave Pitney LLP. So we worked with Signorama to come up with these sign design, which was included in the application materials. That is what we are here seeking approval for this evening. Your ordinance in the R O L zone permits signs to be located a maximum of twenty-five feet from the ground. The sign that we are proposing is twenty-eight feet from the ground, and there's also a variance that we're seeking for internal illumination of the sign. It is, we are proposing that it be lit.
How many hours a day lit?
We were proposing to have it lit, um, all evening, so like through the dawn to dusk, or dusk to dawn. Not dawn to dusk, um, so that it would just be on whenever it was dark out. But we are in receipt of Mr. Chadwick's review memo, the, um, dated March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. His last comment, number three, did recommend that the sign be dimmed during non-business hours. We do have folks who are working at the office and sometimes do have clients come in a little bit later in the evening till nine or ten o'clock sometimes, just depending if we're working on projects with people who are in California, and sometimes they're in for different litigation matters. So we would like to have it lit at least until ten P M. and have no issue dimming it after that time, if the board is agreeable to that time. I know it's a little bit outside of what you might think are traditional hours for a law firm, but we do actually have some people who are in the building and have people coming to the site at that time. So for purposes of identification, especially when it's dark, we would like to have it lit during that time. I have with me this evening our planner, John McDonough, to provide planning testimony as to the variances that we're requesting.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing more than truth?
Yes, I do.
Testified here, I don't know, a hundred times?
Thousand.
Just this year.
My, this is Carter, this is in the same.
Those would have been my two questions, thank you.
Got you.
Take it away, Nicole?
Yes, thanks very much.
This will be a five-minute presentation.
That long? That long?
Five seconds. Show you my pictures.
Did you use the drone?
I did.
All right.
Yes. So this one, Mark.
No, I didn't, I didn't shoot the drone, I, I have somebody else.
You?
Well, Mark, this says A one, this is not in your packet.
And you'll see, this just gives you some context. We're in the heart of the corporate center, which is really nice about this application is business retention. This isn't office building, that's actually staying in office building. So, and you're keeping an anchor, I'll say an anchor for you, for the community here. If you look at your twenty twenty master plan, Dave Pitney is listed in there in the top five or ten employers, um, in town. So this is going to reinforce and retain something that is a key aspect of your, your economic base, maintaining economic development, uh, stable rate of pace. Again, the property is developed, we're not changing that, we're just interior retrofitting and putting this sign on the building. The only reason we leave is because that twenty-eight foot height is that banned, that we're not gonna interfere with windows, so the workers can actually look out. If the sign were lowered, it would interfere with those lines of sight in and out. It really doesn't make sense for people to enter into the building.
And it's three feet?
It's just three feet. It's a, it's a, nobody's going to know the difference. It's going to benefit, a beneficial use, um, no substantially negative impacts visually or functionally. Uh, this is a clear cut seat to test with the mitigation of the overnight dimming. I think the standard is best.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Okay, good job. Good job.
How late, how late do you want to keep this poll, right?
We'd like to, yes.
And what was the reason for that?
We do sometimes have people who are working there at that time. If we have people who are coming to the office to meet them, just for identification purposes, they can see it when they're driving down the road.
And that sign doesn't appear with any residents or anything else around there?
No.
How much is it? And how much is it wrong?
I think this is a slam dunk for minimalist application, and I believe voting in favor.
Are there any other questions from the board? No?
Application twenty-five, colon fifteen, Dave Pitney, Eighth Sylvan Way, block two zero two, lot number one dash one one, zone R O L, to issue our grant to C variance to construct a wall sign.
Second.
With, with the condition that.
With the condition that the lights should be off by ten P M.
Second.
Did you say work? Well done.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Decrows?
Do you, you see us down here, the rest of you? We're, we're down here.
Do you have a question?
No, we don't, but it's nice of you to acknowledge us. Yes.
Mazzarella?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Reddy?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Grignani?
I'll be back with the McDonough sign then.
Thank you very much.
I'll prove it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? So moved. Second. Third.